We move to convene the meeting.
Second.
Okay, roll call. Roll call. If you want to say roll call or not?
Convene a roll call.
Billy Brown, Shirley Barr, Lilly Gibbs.
Present.
Justin Trotter.
Present.
Shama Fallow. Kevin Duggins.
Present.
Did she call my name? I never heard.
Yes.
Okay. I didn't hear.
Is there any old business? All right, bring forth the new business.
Do you want me to go into special because I haven't led a meeting in five years.
All right, is there -- we'd like to open it for any discussion if anybody would like to take the mic.
Yes.
My name is Mackenzie Sosa and I live on 696 West Columbia Avenue, Batesburg. And I wanted to address the bed and breakfast by Ms. Shealy that wants to be done. I have two littles and I just wanted to raise concerns. I would not like it to be passed just because I don't feel like it would be any safety to my children. And the traffic on South Bethlehem is very, very bad with that curve going around. I feel like it wouldn't be any justice to that. And just more so the safety of my children, having the ins and outs even though they're staying for a short period of time. I don't know who would be staying there and just the safety of our neighborhood. Thank you for your time.
Members of the Board of Appeal, my name is Kathy and I live across the street from 700 West Columbia Avenue. Thank you for giving me this chance to share some thoughts regarding this request. I am generally against granting this request for four major reasons. First of all, there's a potential for parking and traffic problems. There's already limited space for parking at this address and more would be needed with the request. There's no on-street parking available anywhere in our neighborhood. I'm especially concerned about traffic with the frequency of semi trucks that come down our street traveling to the nearby chicken farm. The road is narrow and a bed and breakfast guest would not expect to see so many semis on our little road. The traffic problem is illustrated by the number of times our neighborhood mailboxes are hit and destroyed by passing traffic. The nighttime noise from the semi trucks would also be disruptive to a guest trying to sleep. Another traffic issue that would be encountered by the guests is the speed at which the cars and semi trucks drive on Columbia Highway One. The posted speed limit in our neighborhood is 35 miles per hour. However, most cars are driving at least 55 miles even if they're passing the police station. This means the risk for accidents is greater as a guest would be encountering and exiting and entering through this establishment. Our neighbors have already experienced this hazard and have been involved in multiple accidents. We've even had cars driving through our yard trying to avoid an accident at this intersection. A second reason I'm against granting this request is due to the potential for additional noise. Guests at a bed and breakfast have the tendency to create more noise and activity than a single family home. Half of the homes in our neighborhood are occupied by retired people. We also have young children where noise would have a negative effect on them. Additionally, we have a nurse who sleeps during the day and we have two people who work from home where even daytime disruptions could be a problem. A third concern relates to our property values. A nearby commercial venture like a bed and breakfast has the potential to lower our neighborhood property values. It would be different if we would have moved to the neighborhood with an already established commercial business. We would have been aware of this and could have made a decision on purchasing in the neighborhood accordingly. Also, keep in mind there are two adjacent properties on Columbia that have been approved for additional housing in the very near future. This also impacts them. The fourth reason I am against this exemption is the potential to change the character of our neighborhood, eroding its residential feel. At this time, we can name every person who lives in the homes on both sides of our road. We interact frequently and share an everyday life. Adding the bed and breakfast will introduce a transient element. This then introduces more safety risks. Finally, I have an important question. If the special exemption is granted, who will oversee the bed and breakfast to ensure it abides by the codes and ordinances of our town? The property owner already has a propensity not to follow the town's guidelines, so there are some concerns that the bed and breakfast would follow in this same pattern. Thank you for giving me this chance to share my thoughts and concerns.
Good.
Good. So I am LeAnn Riekerd and I am proposing for the bed and breakfast to be at 700 West Columbia Avenue. I do, or I have listened to the concerns of the neighbors and I have not talked to them before tonight. So this is something that if, in fact, it passes, we will have to sit down and, you know, have a meeting and come to, you know, some agreements and talk this through because in no way am I planning to disrupt the neighborhood nor am I planning to lower the property values. That would definitely be the last thing that I would want to do because at some point in time I will want to sell this property and I do not want it to be a reflection of lowering property values by doing this. I have done a good bit of homework on opening up a bed and breakfast in town and yes, there may be some others that are coming to town, but they're not here yet. I am planning to, and it's not going to be big. I mean, this is only four bedrooms, okay? And we were talking about the traffic and how it works. I've already looked into that because if you turn in off of Highway One, this home already has a circular drive that there is enough room for four parking spaces, which is all that are required to be on the side at which you turn in. So you would turn in off Highway One, onto the circle drive, the spaces will go in the direction, and I think y'all have a drawing there that shows how the spaces will be done, and then they will exit onto South Bethlehem Road. When you exit onto South Bethlehem Road, they will, I mean, of course, they can go left or right, whichever way they want to go, but that would take them back out to number one, which is to a stop sign. I'm really not sure how that would, I mean, I do it every day. You know, I'm not sure how four other vehicles would make that much of an impact to change the safety of that intersection. I do agree there are trucks that go to the chicken farm, but we live in a rural town. We live, that's the community that we live in. You know, we're not going to get rid of that. They're gonna, every six weeks, there, and we have chicken houses, so that's how it works. Every six weeks, those trucks are gonna come in, they're gonna pick up the chickens and they're gonna take them out, and it's gonna last for two nights. If I want to be a great bed and breakfast owner, I can actually figure out when those trucks are gonna be coming and going and not even have openings that night. You know, or let them know ahead of time because I know the family that has those chicken farms, they grow for the same company that we do, so that's something that I can even coordinate if that was something that was necessary. Honestly, maybe I'm used to it. I don't hear it. It doesn't bother me. I've lived here my whole life. Matter of fact, I've lived on that road my whole life. The house that I'm living in was part of my family's home. The, or every house down the line now except for one is owned by somebody in my family, you know, that's on the right side of the road. So this is something that when I bought the property, it was something that I wanted to do. I looked into it. I looked, I mean, as far as safety of children in the neighborhood, I'm not sure how having a bed and breakfast, and I'm not calling it transient because these are people that I want to market to J.B. Martin. You know, they have people that come in all the time, and Saldau, which is walking distance from the home, these people need somewhere to stay. Right now, they're driving to Lexington, they're staying in Aiken, they're staying at a bed and breakfast in Ridge Spring, they're staying other places. I want that money to come here in our community. We have a great community and I think that having the bed and breakfast, it's on number one, you know, and eventually number one is gonna widen. You know, they're gonna, matter of fact, there's a building right up the road where they've had to move where their sign was gonna be placed because of widening of number one. That's gonna change the whole aspect because it's gonna widen from Batesburg all the way to Aiken. You know, that's gonna change. So I think at some point in time, it's gonna be a lot of commercial that goes down number one highway. It is a main highway. Yes, right now, it is residential, but as time goes on and things progress, I do feel like that it will become more of commercial real estate going down Highway One. So I think I have presented my plans, my thoughts, how it would work in the packet that I hope that you have received and understand that if you approve this, and I hope that you do, I will be leaving on the property. I will not in any way jeopardize the neighborhood, the, you know, the people in the neighborhood. If I see any, you know, security issues or infractions of anything that's gonna happen, believe you me, I will be the first one to call to have it taken care of. So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them, but like I say, I do think that it's something the community needs. I plan to invest, you know, in the community using, you know, different local businesses and things like that. I've already talked with several local business owners about working with them to promote not only their business, but to be part of the community with the bed and breakfast. That's all. Yes, sir.
Actually, it's every, actually, it's every eight weeks.
Actually, best dressed is different. We grow for best dressed, they do too. Best dressed.
Oh, it's down to six?
Yes, six to seven weeks. It's actually every 42 days.
Okay, well.
Now, Columbia Farms and House, or Columbia Farms, House of Rayford and Amex, they do about every eight weeks, but Best Dress grows a smaller bird, so they do it about every 42 days.
I hold chickens for Amex.
Yeah.
And they used to be Amex chickens.
Yeah.
And I'm glad they're not anymore.
Yeah, they're, they're not anymore. So, yeah, they, Best Dress does every 42, about every 42 days. They just picked ours up this last time at 41 days.
Okay, well, Amex grows a big one. Theirs is more like 10, they go.
Yeah, they grow those little turkeys they call chickens.
Yeah, well, a lot of them are 10 pounds or better.
Yeah, and Best Dress, their goal weight is like 6.75 pounds.
Women that cross the street just and he drives for Best Dress, so I know the chicken part.
I mean, there's nothing we can do, I mean, that's just, that's where we live. You know, I know somebody that built a house down the street from me and did not like the fact that there were chicken houses there, but you know what? Chicken houses were there before you built the house. You know, I mean.
You come building in the country, you gotta expect that, but.
Right.
I personally would like to see this happen. I mean, we need to grow. This is a slow growth. You ain't putting in a subdivision with 900 houses, 10 to the acre.
No.
And as they enlarge, once they get started on the Batesburg and number one to Aiken, yeah, it's gonna open up a lot of things and one thing that you will be able to probably do is approach the people in Augusta. Certain time of the year, like the first Certain time of the year, like the first full week of April. Bingo.
Yeah.
I was, when, um, what was the name of it? Chase.
Well, we have a rental that now that is like an Airbnb, which not a bed and breakfast, but an Airbnb. It is our, every year, the first week of April is already rented. I mean, I have spoke to the people that, there's a couple bed and breakfasts in Ridge Spring, the first week of April is already gone. And that brings people from all over into our town.
Yeah, the one that's on Number One right up, um, that used to be the bed and breakfast on Number One, right up from Sheely's.
Yeah, the Abel house.
Yeah, Abel house.
I stayed there the night I got married.
Yeah, every April, they were, they were sold out a year in advance.
All the time, yes. Yeah, and it was, I mean, and it was a wonderful, and they didn't even have like a bedroom, bathroom for every room. I mean, it was, I mean, but it was wonderful, and the reason they closed was because her husband passed away, and it was just too much for her to do on her own. But they stayed full, and, I mean, she enjoyed it, and it was, you know, a nice establishment. So.
Leanne?
Yes.
Your intentions are just bed and breakfast?
Correct.
No events?
No. No.
Okay.
No events. Matter of fact, that's what somebody even mentioned, you know, that I, I do, there are enough event venues here in town. I do not have the parking for that. I do not want to start that. So, it will, and matter of fact, it's not even gonna be where if, say, you're staying there and you've got family and y'all all want to come over, I don't have parking for that. If everybody could fit in one vehicle, you got four parking spaces. If we can all fit in one vehicle, that's fine. Now, I will have additional parking on the other side of the house, if you're facing the houses on the far right. But there again, we're not talking, we're talking maybe two or three other spaces, not, no, it will not be an event venue.
So, the max for his parking, the concern, you're saying it's gonna be anywhere between six and nine spaces, dang, four?
Four in the front, because like each bedroom is required to have one parking space for per bedroom. So, there will be four in the front. And then after those four, I will have maybe two or three additional on the far right side. But, I mean, like I say, the intention is not, I mean, it's only gonna sleep a total of, I think, eleven guests is how I had it figured out. You know, there'll be two bedrooms that have two, one that'll have three, one that'll have four, so it's not, you know, they don't need, everybody doesn't need to come in their own separate car.
Okay, all right, so no events, and we looking at, give or take, make about four extra vehicles?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
We got that many vehicles in the yard now, so they gotta go somewhere.
What would be your timeline on adding parking spaces, and you thinking that's something you'd have done pretty quickly?
Oh, that would be something that would be done before I actually opened, before it started.
Right.
And I'm looking for a timeline to start would be probably the spring or summer of this coming year. So, not tomorrow, not next week, you know?
So, um, but no events, so that should take care of the concern from the neighbors regarding in the noise, because you're saying about the trucks coming with the chickens, that's gonna be-
That is what it is.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
So, no events, so there's no extra noise coming from your bed and breakfast?
No.
Okay.
No, it's not, we're not gonna have any type of, you know, venue-type events or anything like that, no.
Are there any other questions? Are there any other questions, Ms.? Do you have anything else to add, Ms.?
I have no questions.
Okay, all right, then is there anybody else that would like to speak? About this matter?
I move to a dot.
Is there a motion to make a vote?
I'm gonna say it.
I'll second the motion to vote.
All right, all in favor? Say aye.
Yes.
Wait, do we need to do this on the mic? Okay, all right, all in favor, one at a time preferably.
Yes.
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 All right, the motion's passed. I'd like to make some motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second.
Our portions-
For this evening, we are going to go ahead, and as soon as seats are swapped out, we'll begin the Planning Commission regularly scheduled meeting for this evening.
Call to order of the Town of Batesburg-Leesville, the regular Planning Commission meeting. This is for November the 17th, 2025. Roll call, please.
Laura Gillespie.
Here.
Sean Bryant.
Here.
Jennifer Edwards.
LaJona Williams.
Here.
Rachel Taylor.
Here.
Riley Adams.
Johnny May Lemon.
Do you have a motion to approve the minutes for October the 20th, 25?
Motion.
Approval of the minutes.
District two votes yes.
District four recuses myself, I wasn't here.
At large, yes.
District eight votes yes.
I vote yes. Don't know if we may have to re-vote on that one. She recused. Mm-hmm, so we'll have to bring that back up to the next meeting. All right, so that's a postponement. Okay, we're gonna move to old business. Motion to review, well, let me go ahead and say, this is a postpone request from Claudia Donnelly, Old House Properties LLC, to rezone property located at 413 Hartley Street. That's gonna be TMS number 007020-05-004, consisting of .37 acres, requesting property be rezoned from C1, which is general commercial, to R3, which is a multifamily residential district. Motion to consider.
Motion.
Hello.
Hey.
Welcome. Would you introduce yourself, please?
My name is Claudia Donnelly. Becky Banks had called me about this. She said you guys had some questions regarding this zoning request, so here I am.
Well, I think we're just gonna let you tell us about it first.
All right, really, all I can say about this, I found this house online. I knew I was gonna buy it, and I saw, I didn't see inside, and I bought the house, and then the next day, we found out it was zoned commercial. I always thought it would be the absolutely most beautiful home. It is a beautiful house. It needs everything done, but here, we stripped it down to bare bones. Everything that wasn't there in 1910 is out of the house, and we're just gonna rebuild it, but I was hoping that it could be lived in like a home. And it sits in the middle of a residential, there's neighbors all the way around.
Right. So, everybody has pulled that map, or you've driven by, and you, everybody knows that. I know you'll probably have driven by twice now at least from last time.
Yeah.
So, I'm gonna open up the discussion.
I have a question. What is your intent about the building that's on the back of the property that appears to have been an apartment or something at one point in time? I know it was an apartment. I want to take it down. I just wanted it to be a house with a backyard, with a garden. Okay.
Can you hear her? Can everybody hear her? All right, Ms. Donnelly?
Not here.
Other questions? Ms. Lemon?
No. Questions?
You don't have any? So, are you, you're gonna make this a house to live in? Are you living in this house, or are you?
I'd like to, yes.
Okay.
That was my plan. It's definitely not livable now. I thought the house was a lot more livable when I bought it, looking at the pictures, but everything was pretend, everything. The second we turned the water on, it was water everywhere. Everything needs to be redone. So, we started with taking out everything that doesn't belong in the house, the lowered ceilings, drywall, all that stuff. So, it's done, it's all beadboard, wooden floors. It's really, it's an amazing, beautiful house, has all the original features. And I just want to restore it to what it used to be and have, you know, proper modern things like a kitchen and the bathrooms. There's nothing that's hooked up. The toilet sits over a hole, bathtub sits over a hole, nothing is set up there. Have you already started the permitting process? No, because we only have taken stuff out. You've just done a demo as such? Yeah. Right. It was kind of a bit of a treasure hunt, us getting in there to see what we have, because there's walls where they don't belong, doors where they're not, no doors where they were supposed to be, and we found everything. So, we stripped it down to the original and- I noticed some of the pillars are tree stumps that are up under the house. Um, I don't think that they're actually functional, but yeah, the house has to be kind of reset a little bit. It's a little crooked and- They did that to level it up, you suppose? Some of it just sits under there, but it's, really, it has nothing sitting on it, but the whole house needs to be leveled. It's very crooked in different places.
Actually, that could be cedar, or it could even have come from the Edisto River, so you could have, you could have cypress under there.
Well, it has, it has the corner pillars and all that. It's just I think they're settling from all the years, and it being empty for so long, I'm really not too concerned, but as far as, I mean, it's an old house, it's never gonna be, you know, all straightened and that, and I'm okay with that, but there's an old porch section in there where you put a marble, and it'll be over there in two seconds because it's so crooked, it's an old porch, but it has everything there, it just needs to work and put some love in it.
Okay, very good. Any more questions? All right. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Have a motion to vote?
Motion.
Second.
Okay.
District two votes no.
District four votes yes.
At large votes yes.
And district eight votes yes.
And district one votes yes. Now, you just have to get with Becky. The motion carries. You'll get with Becky, and she'll tell you what your next steps are.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And I think the next step is council. That one go through council?
Yes.
I think so, maybe. Becky, you and Becky will get together on that one, okay? Thank you so much for your time, and I wish you best of luck on that home.
Because they're doing the same.
All right, so now we're gonna go to new business, and this is the zoning request, and from, help me with this name, please? Mr. Tran. PXC Tran LLC to rezone property located at 532 West Columbia Avenue. That's TMS 007027-07-001. It's from C2 Office and Institutional Commercial District to C1 General Commercial. Do I have a motion to consider?
I make that motion to consider.
Motion to discuss. Mr. Tran, would you like to come on up?
Yes, we would like to change from C2 to C1. Last time, we changed from C1 to C2 for the daycare, but unfortunately, the lady who opened the daycare, she, the state has ended the daycare funding, so she could not continue, and then it's hard for us to rent it out as a C1. So, we request that we change to C2, and my brother-in-law, he's a graphic designer, and I also am staying to be a general contractor, so hopefully I can open a renovation business there, or a construction company.
I definitely remember when this first came up, and I remember we were concerned-
Yes.
-at the time, but we also thought it was the, that her ideas were a good idea, so.
Yes, unfortunately, it didn't turn out the way we wanted it to.
All right, do you have any questions, Mr. Tran?